At six o'clock, we'll call the next meeting of the Louisville City Council to order. And we do have a quorum present. And Julie, are you going to read this?
I just would like to make one announcement. As long as you're social distancing, please feel free to take your masks off if you like to in this room. Mayor, our first item is this discussion of regular agenda items.
Anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? Now, we're down to regular hearing, item six.
I had a quick question about item six.
Okay, check your mic.
Can you hear me? It might be a little bit too far. Can you hear me now?
Barely.
Barely, okay. So for item six, it looks like this is the same item as number five in the consent agenda, just for Denton County instead of Dallas. And I was just curious why one was consent and one was public hearing.
So one is on consent, that's the Dallas, and we really aren't getting nearly as much money, and there's no real discussion.
Donna, check, see if your microphone's on or...
It's on, it's low.
Can you not hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
It's on.
It's on. I had to bring it out to you a little bit.
I just have such a sweet, soft voice. So item five is with Dallas County. And with Dallas County, it's a much smaller amount of money, and so there are really not a lot of discussion. And when we get to the Denton County, we have some issues for council to really consider. And that really relates to how you decide to spend the CDBG money in relation to how you spend the CARES money.
Okay.
And so, and there's a new spreadsheet that I'm going to walk you through when we get to that item that has a lot of detail. The interesting thing here, it's much like everything with COVID, everything changes overnight. And so, late last week, we got a call from Denton County that basically said, what we're going to tell you now is that really any money spent on public safety qualifies for CARES spending, and it's not auditable, which was totally different from what we knew before. So the picture changed. We even had a Zoom call with all the city managers on Friday and talked through it. So that's a very different picture. And so, we had to redo the handout that's in your backup.
Okay.
And I'll go through all of that with you when we get to that item.
Okay.
There's just a lot more detail and a lot more issues to discuss. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Item seven? Item eight? Item nine? Item 10? Item 11? And then we're down to the reports. Okay?
Mayor, I might add, if we could go back to that item five, the Dallas County issue related to CARES Act. So, one thing that's interesting that we were told on our last Zoom call related to this is that that money does not necessarily have to be spent just in the Dallas County sector of Louisville, which I found kind of interesting. So it's like $66,000, but we have, you see us applying it to equipment, just because equipment that we're using supports the entire city, whether it be in Dallas County or Denton County. Okay?
Okay, now we're DCTA.
So I know Councilman Gilmore is going to do a part of this presentation, and Brandy Byrd, who is our consultant on transportation, is going to do a section. I just don't know for sure who goes first. Must be Brandy.
I go first, Donna, so thank you. Let me just get this loaded for you here. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Can y'all hear me okay?
No.
Oh, I can't, but I don't know if that's me or...
No, I have the same problem that Donna does, the sweet voice.
There you go, thank you.
Project.
I'll move it closer. Okay, are we loaded, Julie?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, thank you. So for those of you that I haven't had a chance to meet yet, I'm Brandy Byrd, and I am a transportation consultant and lobbyist. I have represented the city of Louisville for about 18 months now, working specifically on this project. So I've had a chance to work very closely with Councilman Gilmore, who's your appointee to the DCTA Board, and then also your staff, Donna Baron and Claire Powell. And I just want to say that it's been an absolute pleasure to work with them. Y'all have such a smart, talented team. We have really enjoyed working on this project and have made a lot of progress. So, a little bit about me. When I began working with the city on this project about 18 months ago, our focus was really to restructure DCTA and to really focus the agency on providing more value to the residents of Louisville. And so, my background, and I live here in Denton County, so we are local. We're very familiar with all the traffic challenges that we all face. And I started my career working for the House Transportation Committee in Austin, so have worked my entire career on transportation issues, and then went to the North Texas Tollway Authority as their Government Relations Director before starting my own government relations practice. So, transportation and transit is definitely my background and has been my focus. And so, I also just want to say, as part of this project, Councilman Gilmore has invested countless hours.
Oh, I've counted them.
Thousands of hours. Andrew's staff as well, Donna and Claire, have both been really dedicated to this effort. We talk probably hundreds of hours a month, it seems. They may be really tired of talking to me, but this has been a really, very much a dedicated staff and council focused on this effort and all working together as a team. So it's really been enjoyable. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of context of how we got here and the history of this before TJ gets more into the future and where we're headed with this effort. So, in 2018, in the fall, Denton, the city of Denton, was considering a pullout election because they felt that their citizens weren't getting the value out of DCTA. And we had seen some train and some bus ridership declining over those years. Meanwhile, the sales tax funding was increasing, and that really would have left, if they had actually chosen to do that, that would have left Louisville bearing the brunt of the majority of the overhead for the Denton County Transportation Authority. And so, the three-member cities led by your city staff and the Denton city staff as well, really brought together the three-member cities and the county. The county, very much through Judge Eads, had a leadership role in this effort, and they decided to transform the agency, not to dissolve it, and just to refocus it on providing greater value to the member cities and the county. And so, that's where I came on and was brought on board by the city of Louisville, Denton, and Highland Village, all three member cities, to represent you and to bring about legislation that would restructure the Board. I will, please feel free to interrupt me if you have questions as we go along. I want this to be interactive, so I could ram on about this forever, so please stop me if you have questions. Just a little bit about what we've accomplished so far. From the fall of 2018 to now, we worked as a committee to develop consensus amongst the three-member cities and the county to restructure the Board and to refocus the priorities of the agency. In the 2019 legislative session, we passed legislation to reduce the Board. So, it's now a five-member Board, one appointee from each of the three-member cities, and two from the county. And the two from the county really acknowledges the original investment made by the county to fund the A-Train construction. Of course, Councilman Gilmore was appointed to the Board by the Council, and he was subsequently appointed as Vice Chair of the DCTA Board. We then went through a very extensive process to rewrite the bylaws based on the legislation and to really ensure that the agency is effectively controlled by the three-member cities and the county, and that the entities that are investing funding in DCTA control the future of the agency. And that was really the heart of the goal of this entire effort. That bylaws process was very extensive. Councilman Gilmore can speak to that certainly. But we also worked with the agency in the last fiscal year to bring forth a reduced budget package as well, just, again, looking to the future of what are the priorities of the Board and where do they really want to focus. And then, your staff and Donna Baron and also Todd Heileman from the city of Denton worked heavily on an effort with the DCTA staff to ensure that all of the contract service, because there are quite a few entities, non-member cities of DCTA that contract with the agency to provide service. And after a thorough analysis of those dollars and the way the costs break down, the Board just recently approved an administrative fee policy which ensures that all of the direct cost and all of the indirect cost, meaning the staff that spend time on these contracts, a portion of the facilities that are used to provide bus service, all of those indirect costs are also covered by the contracts and the administrative fee that are associated with those contracts. So that was a huge effort, just recently passed by the DCTA Board, and it just ensures that the member cities are seeing a positive return from those contracts and not investing member city dollars and subsidizing that service. So that's a lot to say where we have been and what we have accomplished. And I will just take a moment and pause for any questions before we move on to the future.
I had a quick question.
Yes.
So with the administrative fee policy, how many current contracts are there that this is not applicable on until they are at a place where they need to renew?
So, there's two big contracts that deal with non-member cities. One is Collin County Transit, and that is actually made up of about six cities in Collin County, but McKinney being the larger one, and then there are a handful of smaller cities surrounding McKinney. And then the second one is Frisco. And so, luckily, the timing worked out very well, and the Board has extended those contracts just slightly by a couple of months in order to get this administrative fee policy in place. So they actually expire within the next two months, and the Board has already instructed staff to have those conversations with those entities about the costs increasing. So, we were certainly, well, the Board certainly developed the policy and extended the contracts to ensure that that timing worked out well.
And do we have the price differences? Do we have any idea, like the ballpark of what difference that makes?
Yes. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but we can absolutely get those to you. But it equated to a 60% administrative fee on top of the direct costs that were already being charged. So it's pretty substantial, several hundred thousand dollars on each of these contracts.
One thing we looked at was a difference between the other contracts. It's with UNT as a contract for bus service and NCTC. And so, that indirect cost percentage that was added was not added to the same level for the educational entities. And I think we decided on 20%?
The Board decided that the educational institutions should cover 75% of the cost, direct and indirect, that are associated with those contracts. And there was quite a bit of debate on that topic. We did look at some of the other transit agencies as a model to see what their policies look like. For instance, DART subsidizes all of their university contracts at 50%. So the Board felt like that was too low, and 75% was a magic number to make sure that, one, you're getting the ridership from the universities, because that's a key, obviously, target audience for their riders, but also to ensure that they're not too heavily subsidized. So that was a balance that the Board chose. And TJ, please feel free to add to that if you want.
Well, and I think the other piece to understand is that when we broke these contracts out, we identified that we were not covering our costs. And so, when you talk about going to other counties and taking those resources, you're literally taking the donor, member cities' money, and you're applying it to those other municipalities or counties. And I don't think most residents in Louisville would terribly appreciate those dollars, which could be used to develop our rail stations, they could be used to develop more frequency with buses. In fact, those are the things that we're looking at with the efficiency study that you'll see in a little bit. But this, we think it's fair, it's modeled very similarly to other transit authorities, and quite frankly, we're half the cost of the other transit authorities in North Texas. We're a half cent versus a full cent. So, it's important that we cover all those costs and make sure that we recover them.
Thank you, TJ. So that is just a very quick recap of a whole lot of work that went into probably the first year and a half of what I've just covered. And now, we're going to talk a little bit about where we're headed in the future and what we've been focused on, and what your direction, obviously, on where you would like to see staff focus on this effort. So, the future goals related to DCTA really boil down to three very basic principles, which you can see on your screen. It's really protecting the taxpayer dollars that Louisville is investing in DCTA, increase the ridership, and improve the service for your residents. And just to give you a little context of the kind of sales tax contributions that are coming from Louisville and being invested in DCTA, from the agency's inception in 2004, the contribution was 4.8 million a year. By 2010, that was 8.3 million a year. 2018, it had risen to 13.8 million, and 2019, it was 14.4 million. That's the half-cent sales tax that's dedicated to DCTA by Louisville. And so, it's a sizable contribution. The total since 2004 is 156.5 million. And so, that obviously is why we're focused on making sure that the agency and obviously the Board, through Councilman Gilmore's leadership, is focused on how to improve and how to bring greater value back to your residents for the dollars that are being invested. One of the ways that we're focused on bringing greater value is through the efficiency study, and this is going to be a major effort. Claire Powell has already spent a lot of time focused on this effort on the selection committee, but the staff and your team and through Councilman Gilmore will be very focused on this for the next six to nine months. And this is an item that your staff and the city of Denton's staff really focused on from the very beginning of this effort. So, this initially was discussed as being part of the legislation, requiring an efficiency study. And instead, we determined, and through the subcommittee, we agreed that this would be more of an administrative process and not necessarily codified in legislation. The Board is going to approve the consultants later this month, and the efficiency study is going to be focused on kind of a wholesale analysis of the current status of the organization and some recommendations on how to increase service and what service expansion opportunities are available. So, some of the things that they'll be looking at is an analysis of all the existing transportation service that's being provided and recommendations to increase ridership, a top-down staffing study focusing on rightsizing the organization, compensation study, and their overall organizational structure, and then a financial analysis looking at reserve policies and budgeting of replacement costs, and then also a technology analysis. And this is something that the DCTA staff has asked for. I think they themselves have identified some holes that they would like to invest, they would like the Board to invest in some technology advancements. And so, that's something that the efficiency study consultant will be looking at as well. The consultant team will report directly to the Board of Directors, and we're expecting it to take approximately six months to complete this study. The consultant has not been selected by the Board yet, so that timeline isn't final, but that's the general timeframe that we're expecting. And just to give you an idea of what we expect at the end of this study, so the goal is really to identify efficiencies which will result in cost savings that could then be reinvested in service. And the Board certainly will have a lot of important decisions to make at the end of this process. We're expecting to have a menu of options from the consultant that will give the DCTA Board some opportunities to reinvest into new service or expand service. And so, certainly, these are just some ideas, just to give you some context and some flavor for what you may be hearing about in the future. At the end of this study, the consultant may have many more ideas. So these are just some examples, but we wanted you to have a little bit of context and overview, so that when you hear about this in the future, you'll understand some of the options that the Board is going to be considering. So, some of those could include increasing the frequencies on the bus routes. Pre-COVID, the bus routes were running every 30 minutes, so 30-minute headways between buses. Currently, they're running every 60 minutes, and that's the emergency service that was put in place during COVID-19. And same for the A-Train. So, pre-COVID, the A-Train was running on 30-minute frequencies, and they're currently running as an emergency service on 60-minute headways, meaning 60 minutes between each train. And so, this is a big issue that the Board has been discussing. Councilman Gilmore has brought this issue up in the last Board meeting, and they'll continue to talk about it in the budget workshop that will take place this week. But that's one opportunity to expand service in the city of Louisville would be to decrease those frequencies to 20 minutes or 15 minutes. Obviously, there's a cost associated with that, but that's one opportunity that the Board will be considering. And same for the A-Train. There are technical limitations to reducing the frequencies on the A-Train, and obviously, costs associated with that as well. But that is one option that the Board will be discussing as far as how to expand service. Another one is extending the A-Train south to provide a direct connection to DART's Silver Line project, and I'll explain a little bit more about that in a moment. And then, a fourth option is determining if microtransit could provide more direct service to residents and better connections to the A-Train. And so, Councilman Gilmore's going to talk more about that in a moment as well. And again, this is not meant to be an exhaustive list by any means. We are hoping the consultant will come forth with lots of other ideas, but we just wanted to give you some overview of what could be coming in the future. And so, this is a map of DART's Silver Line project. This, it's the dotted line that you see, that basically, the blue dotted line through the middle of the image that runs from DFW Airport through downtown Carrollton and then over to Richardson and Plano. And this project is currently under construction by DART. It's a commuter rail project similar to the A-Train, and it is expected to open in December of 2022. And you can see on the map, the A-Train currently stops at Trinity Mills, that's the southernmost point in Carrollton, and it could extend further to downtown Carrollton. It's about two miles of an extension that would bring the A-Train down and have a direct connection in downtown Carrollton. And that alignment is owned by DART, so it would have to be approved and negotiated by DART. The entire DCTA A-Train alignment is owned by DART. DCTA leases that property. It's a 30-year lease. And so, this section, obviously, is owned by DART as well and would have to have a similar structure. But it is an opportunity to provide a direct connection to the Silver Line project. It would give your residents access to some of those destinations along the Silver Line, like DFW Airport, Cypress Waters, which there's a lot of large employers that are located there. Addison, the Mary Kay headquarters is located very close to the Silver Line project in Addison, and then UT Dallas over in Richardson and on over to Plano. So, this is just one option. The Board may or may not decide that this is a priority. They may want to invest those dollars elsewhere, but this is one option. And we wanted just for you to have some background on this in case it's something that the Board brings to you in the future. And TJ, I will turn it over to you.
Absolutely. And I wanted to just make a point here. You're going to see efficiency study, which is our language, and you're going to see transformation initiative, which is DCTA's language. Same thing, just efficiency study is the more general nomenclature for one of these things where you're doing a top-down, complete review of how the organization operates. So let's talk a little bit about microtransit. You guys are used to microtransit. If you use Uber or Lyft, those are similar types of products. There's lots of benefits and drawbacks to them. Part of the challenge is, of course, they don't carry as many people per hour, so they tend to be more expensive. But you also have that kind of microtransit when you're talking about special services buses for people who maybe need wheelchairs or those types of things. So, that's a piece that we are looking at. The question, when you're talking about budgeting for the DCTA, is how much coverage can we have and how much frequency can we have? The more frequent you have, the less coverage you're probably going to have for a given amount of dollars. Of course, the more spread out your footprint is to cover lots of areas, that means that your lead times are going to be longer because your buses have to circulate more. So, this might be a way to fill those gaps. We're looking at it. But it's going to be through an RFP process, and we'll also be looking at it through the efficiency study to see, does it help fill last-mile gaps? Does it help get people to the train station without having to drive their car there? A lot of different ways that it might fit more effectively within the system. Now, next slide, we actually have a microtransit within Louisville, and it covers the Lakeway Zone. That's all those businesses and offices down there. This used to be a bus route. Now, it's an on-call with an app. Of course, the only way you can really get to it is if you use the Hebron Station. So you can either use the microtransit within that park out to Hebron Station, or you can use Hebron Station and then get microtransit to move into the park. So it's a great way to cover that last mile. The flip side is, we lost a bus route that people could have hopped into and taken from a residential area within Louisville. So, those are some areas that we have to take a look at and see, can we be more efficient with these? Do they make more sense in other places? Denton actually has an interest in maybe going to all microtransit for their area, but they also have the benefit of bus routes for UNT and existing contract work up there that we don't necessarily have here in Louisville. Next slide. Here's another microtransit area. This is actually recently put together for Highland Village. They decided that they didn't want the little miniature circulator bus running empty throughout the city multiple times a day. So instead, they decided to do a microtransit. And that's actually through Lyft. So, think of it as a way to subsidize a Lyft ticket for them, but that's part of their funding into DCTA coming back to benefit their residents. And of course, as you can see, it's designed to get them back into the Louisville Lake Station. Next slide. We're also looking back at ELAP program. Back when DCTA started, they started collecting revenues before the train got going, which meant that they had a surplus of revenues. So the city said, well, that's great, but in that time with surplus of revenues, can you write some of that back to us to use for transit-oriented types of applications? ELAP's work all across the country, and this may be an opportunity for us to reclaim when we look at that efficiency study. Some of those tax dollars for transit-oriented development, for, you know, the Valley Ridge Trail, there's several options there on the Board. But again, this all has to be within the box of that efficiency study, because we don't know if there's surplus money, if we don't have a good study that says, are we being as efficient as we can be with your tax dollars? Next slide. We've been working very, very hard to build a better relationship with DART and to improve those connections between DART and DCTA. That's, I think, a big reason. DART is kind of that spine that runs north-south, but the added value of being able to get to the Silver Line, the Green Line, into Dallas, into the airport, I think those are benefits that we would be remiss if we did not explore every opportunity. And since we have to work with DART, let's make sure that's the best relationship we can have. I'm going to blame Mr. Kunkie for the trolley in Old Town, but I love the idea. And if we can have some sort of circulator that works with Old Town and helps our Old Town businesses, I think that's another unique option that we might be able to put down beyond, once we get past COVID and all the other good stuff. once we get past COVID and all the other good stuff. We've got to find some ways to bring new member cities into DCTA. And of course, that needs to be equitable, of course. You know, the old way of doing it was, okay, you figured out how to gather up every bit of sales tax that you would have donated since the beginning of DCTA and write us a big fat check. That nobody will ever surmount that hurdle. It's too big. But is there a way to give an equitable decision-making process for somebody that maybe is joining? They want to put in the money. They want to develop their city, but they don't necessarily have the sales tax rolls of a Lewisville or a Denton to drive it. So, we've got to balance that money into the system and the voting power that goes along with being a member. And maybe it's just being a member without voting privileges. So, that's a big conversation we have to have. Intermodal Center here in Old Town, that's another conversation that we've been having, and some of the land that council has been working on that we've actually had some agreements with. That's all moving forward, and so, DCTA is now working on building a multi-story building, looking at the design work, what can we get for tenants, maybe even having repair facilities or those types of things that might even help DART. There's some interesting conversations around all of that. But again, more development around our Old Town Station. And with that, I will open it up to any questions or comments anybody has.
Yeah, I have a few comments. I'm glad that we're doing this efficiency study finally. I was on the community advisory board before I got on council and was very disappointed with DCTA and their lack of movement in any direction to improve. I was using the train when the I-35 construction was going on. And I have to tell you, I went to DART because it was just such an inconvenience with the timing and everything with the A-Train. The A-Train is fantastic, don't get me wrong. And I said as much in that advisory board, and I guess the response, I guess now, is that you can get to Hebron Station for free. That's not going to move people between here and Denton and everything. So, I'm looking forward to see what this study will be because I want to see some concrete changes that actually is good for people who live in Lewisville. I've taken the bus before, and a few times, it's been perfectly on time. One time, it didn't show up, and I got back to my house and to my car and then saw the bus. So, some people like, I was using it just to check it out and to meet someone. Some people are using that to get to work, and that's not acceptable. And we just have to do a better job. And I know you're working on that, TJ, and I'm not trying to, you know, blame you guys for it, but I'm like, these are the things that historically have been going on. I'm all for ELAP. The microtransit, I'm like, I want to know a little bit more about that. If it's more efficient and it works for everybody, great. I think one thing that you guys may want to do while you're looking at that is talk to the ridership of your buses because those are the people, either they're going to love it, or they'll let you know if they don't. Just doing microtransit, I'm sure it works great in these partner cities, McKinney and Flower Mound, where they're using it to go to doctor's visits. That's great. But I'm worried about the people in Lewisville who are trying to get to work and need those bus routes to be on time.
Yeah. And Brandon, your comments to me on that have, I've made sure to populate that back to DCTA staff. One of the things that COVID, unfortunately, it's massively impacted ridership.
That's, yeah. We have no control over that.
You know, I'm a glasses-half-full kind of guy. This gives us an opportunity for a reset, so there's conversations to be had around that. But I'm with you. If I can't count on that, like I can count on my heart to get me up in the morning, I'm not going to use a bus. I'm going to buy an old beater car, and I'm going to use that, and hopefully, it's reliable enough. If I'm using it for work, it has to be on time all the time. I have to be able to count on it.
And Councilman, if I can just add to your point on microtransit, and TJ has had many conversations with the DCTA staff about this as well, so he's very focused on it. But it is a delicate balance, as you pointed out. Microtransit does provide more flexibility, so it is more like Uber Pool where it will come closer to your destination on your timeline and group you with a group of people who are also traveling to a generally similar destination. But there has to be some mix, or at least, I think that's certainly been TJ's focus, is there has to be some mix of fixed route bus service and microtransit to really meet the needs of the population, and obviously, limited dollars. And so, the board's going to have some difficult decisions to make about how those dollars get invested. But to your point, absolutely focused on that.
I want to thank staff and Brandy as well. The amount of work that they're doing is phenomenal. So, thank you for the opportunity to serve the community, but I think you guys are going to be pleased with the outcome, especially when you look at how much ground we have covered in the past year and a half to completely fundamentally reorganize DCTA and get it back and refocus on providing services for Denton County and providing quality services for those who want to contract with us in a way that makes sense and is fair. That's all I've got.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Any questions from the audience? Okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. Thank you, Brandon. I'll take care of this for the next person.
Now, we're down to discussion of sustainability plan.
Mayor and council, you gave direction on the development of a sustainability plan, and Mindy White, our sustainability coordinator, has been hard at work on that. And she's here tonight to present an overview of where we are. Now, you may want to drill down into some of these topics in more detail. We only have not quite 30 minutes left tonight, so if there are certain issues you'd like us to bring back at a later time for a separate workshop, we can schedule that also. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mindy, and she'll walk you through where we are today.
Thank you, and thank you, council. Hopefully, I can draw on my theater background and project enough that you can hear me with the microphone this evening. Oh, my goodness. Driving wrong. I'm sorry. There we go. Oh, and that's not my presentation. Oh, my goodness. Pardon me, y'all.
Mindy, just go down to the folder, and your flash drives in there also. It's right there. Go up one, and your PowerPoint's right there.
I promise I've computed before. Does that look okay for y'all? There are a few slides that, if you're watching this monitor over here, you may see a small amount that was trimmed off earlier, so you may want to follow along on your iPads instead to see the full screen. So, tonight, I am bringing back information on our Sustainability Action Plan, and this is something that we've been working on for about a year and a half now. And I have some updates that I'm very excited to bring you this evening, and I'm looking forward to hearing some of your feedback on that. As an overview of what we'll be discussing, I'm going to review the things that we've done to date, the research we've put into it, some of the background information, some of the public meetings that we've had from staff and from our residents. And then, I'm going to take all of that information and show you the proposed plan categories that we're bringing to you that we will be hopefully moving forward with to flesh out for our overall Sustainability Action Plan. And then, at the end, I'll show you our proposed timeline, so you'll see what the next steps are in the process and when we hope to come back with a final draft for you to adopt. Before we start, I did want to note a couple of things. It is important to note that this is just a framework and a general suggestion of the categories that we feel like are important based on the feedback that we've seen so far. The specific projects and what that might look like will be fleshed out a little bit as we go through the plan. This is a framework that's dynamic, and we can adapt it as we need. Sometimes, things happen like a global pandemic that nobody could see coming, and you have to adjust your sails a little bit. And so, this plan is written, or will be written, in such a way that allows us to have that ability to pivot as necessary. And I also wanted to mention that just because something is listed on some of these particular categories as a potential strategy for us to pursue, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to go full steam ahead and develop a full-fledged program for the city of Lewisville under that particular strategy. It might be as simple as providing a letter of support to the Council of Governments that says, "We support this initiative on a regional level." It might be a feasibility study to see if that's something that would work well here, or it might be creating an actual program here for the city. So, keep that in mind as we go as well, that all of these different categories and the strategies embedded with them are not necessarily of themselves a full-on program. Just to give you a little bit of a reminder of how we got to where we are, this is the STAR framework of goals and objectives. We initially were going to seek STAR certification as the framework for our Sustainability Plan. And we started that process right about the time that STAR converted over to Lead for Cities, and it wasn't really a feasible option for us at that point. However, this is still serving as a great foundation for us as we've been drafting this plan. You'll see that a lot of these areas really fit well and mesh well with what we're already doing through our 2025 plan. And so, there's a lot of overlap there with some successes that we've already had. We met previously with our staff and talked about where do we have gaps and where are we doing great? And we found out that we're really doing great in a lot of these areas. There were certainly some gaps and things that we had hoped to address, but there were a lot of successes as well. So, that's kind of the baseline of where we're starting out, and it's really informed a lot of the conversations that we had with our residents and staff throughout this process. So, to touch on this idea of 2025, many of those categories are standalone pieces of 2025. And in retreat, the question came up of how do we have a standalone category of sustainability when all of these categories kind of really touch on it? And that's where we're coming in with the Sustainability Action Plan, where we're showing many of these concepts and strategies that you'll see here will be embedded in those big moves. But the plan itself is showing us a greater resolution of detail, and it's showing us that pathway forward to find some successes in those areas. We're also working very closely with Karen Walls to make sure that those two plans are in alignment and that they're consistent with the messaging that they're providing, so they're not independent of each other. They're being developed together so that they fit well. This is a quick reminder of what we've done to date. I'm not going to bore you with every single one of these items, but I did want you to see how much work that we've put in to date to make sure that we are bringing forward a very well-informed action plan for you guys that is really steeped in input from our community and fits what our community's needs are. When we look at the overall timeline for our Sustainability Action Plan, you may recall in the fall, there were quite a few community meetings that staff went out all over the city, had small meetings, neighborhood meetings, large-scale meetings. We had our touch point in January, and we received quite a bit of good information through those meetings, and I'll share some of that with you here in just a little bit. We also had some public meetings that were focused specifically on the plan itself. And the people that we invited to those meetings were folks that we identified through the other outreach processes, through different public events, like the Keep Lewisville Beautiful cleanup events, people that identified that they cared a lot about sustainability or issues that were related to sustainability in the community. And we came together with those folks and got a little bit deeper dive into what they felt like should be priorities and important pieces to consider. We also had a meeting with the directors and where I kind of walked through these different categories with them as well, and I had a survey that I sent out in advance of the director's meeting that we'll go through a little bit more in-depth in a few slides that really helps inform, excuse me, inform as well the strategies that our directors feel like and our leadership feel like are important to focus on. After this meeting, we have some employee focus group meetings and green team meetings that will be further informing some of the more detailed components of the plan itself. We'll take all of that together, flesh it out into a rough draft. Pardon me for a moment. And then, take that rough draft and get feedback from key stakeholders out in the community. Take that to a final sustainability plan that's polished, ready for you guys to see and seek action at that point from council. Excuse me. So, just to talk a little bit more in-depth about what these focus groups looked like with those key stakeholders that were really passionate and really interested in sustainability, we had that email list that we had collected all through the fall and the spring. And in March, we had two particular meetings that we had at Front Herring and one at the library, where we brought folks in and talked through the different topics and allowed them to rate which ones they felt like were the best fit for Lewisville or deserved the most attention. And here's a few pictures that came from that meeting with some of the residents that were in attendance. There was some really rich conversation there. They were very, very passionate. In the picture on the far right, you can kind of see there's some colored dots there. We provided them with green dots, yellow dots, and red dots so that they could mark the ideas that they felt like had the most merit or that were the best fit for Lewisville that we should approach first. And then, all of this information that we received from all of these public meetings, both the workshops, the touch point with 2025, the specific Sustainability Plan meetings, have been compiled into this enormous spreadsheet. I just took a quick snapshot of it so you could kind of see how we've sussed out this information, where it says exactly which meetings it came from, and then, we've got it broken down by all of the different potential categories for our Sustainability Action Plan. So, we can see exactly what people have told us that they want and where it fits with these potential categories. If you're interested in seeing the whole thing, I'm happy to share that with you, but it's very, very meaty. These are some of the ideas in particular that we received through these different meetings that I thought were kind of interesting or that we saw more than once. And I wanted to share some of these ideas with you as well because I think some of these have a lot of potential for being a good fit for our Sustainability Plan here in Lewisville. So, I mentioned earlier the director's survey. I had them complete this survey in advance that asked them to rank the ideas that we were looking at based on priority. Where should we focus our resources and our efforts first? And based on the survey, we came up with a top four issues and bottom four issues, all of which everyone still felt were important, but ones that we should focus on first were on the left. I was a little bit surprised by the results of the survey, but had some really interesting responses in terms of why people picked the ones that they did. So, I'm interested to include this along with what we received from the general public. In addition to that, the directors also provided for me what they felt like were missing topics or missing subjects within the plan. What I think is really interesting about this is many of these topics are focused on in other areas of 2025, so I feel like we're really hitting the mark with things that we're already talking about. And so, maybe we just look at embedding sustainability a little bit more in some of those topical areas that are covered in other big moves, employment centers, thriving neighborhoods, things like that. On the right side, you'll notice the biggest barriers. I felt like it was really important to get an idea about what our leadership felt like would be the biggest barriers to successful implementation of this plan. Obviously, budgetary constraints is a big one right now, but people felt like budget, excuse me, public engagement and buy-in would also be a big piece of that. So, those definitely were useful pieces of information. And knowing that and knowing what we are looking at in light of what's happened with COVID and the uncertain forecast coming from that, I've decided that we should phase our approach to our Sustainability Action Plan and prioritize it based on the things that, where we can front-load the first phase of the plan with things that would be lower-cost efforts or no-cost efforts, things where we're maybe building community collaborations or partnerships, or we're improving our outreach efforts. We're doing some benchmarking, things that we can do on the front end that would then be a good foundation for the second, third, fourth year once we have a better idea of what our fiscal outlook is going to be. So, then, we're still getting some success in terms of implementation of the plan, but it's not at as big of an ask for our staff or for our budget. So, I've kind of reframed it with that in mind. So, I'd like to introduce you to the strategies that I feel like, based on all the input from the leadership... from the leadership, the directors, the community, should be the focus of our Sustainability Plan. These were the top eight areas that we were focusing on initially: energy, water, waste, equity and inclusiveness, health and wellness, transportation, green space, and city operations. Obviously, some of these are things that we've already been doing, we've already seen great success with. Some of them are a little bit newer focus that we haven't really done much in those areas before. But I'm also proposing now that, in light of how we are planning to shift our focus for the first year, that we also add a community outreach and education piece to the Sustainability Action Plan, so that then we can really spend time building those rich community relationships and looking for those collaborations that will help us be successful throughout the So the first category, and before I start going through this in particular, I have this broken down. Each category has a number of strategies underneath it. The strategies vary depending on the topic. After that slide, I'll have a slide that I'll show you expected benefits, and then I'll provide examples of other communities that have successfully implemented programs similar to that. So I'll walk you through the first slide with some of these strategies, show you the second slide, and then refer back to our first slide for any comments or questions that you may have about this particular topical area. So the first category is energy. And again, this is an area where we've already seen quite a few successes here in the city, but it's looking at building on those successes that we already have and then stretching a little bit further and growing as a result. So advancing energy performance of city facilities and properties. We've done some really amazing things in our facilities department so far, but there's always opportunities for more. And I know they're always looking for ways that they can have new ideas or new equipment that can help that as well. So it's just recognizing that while we've had great performance, we can continue to do so and really raise the bar for our facilities performance. Developing community-wide renewable energy strategies. This is one of those that's a big bite, so it might look a little bit more like a feasibility study, a benchmarking study, coming up with a strategy for how we can have renewable energy more community-wide. There's also some regional efforts that are going on right now, spearheaded by Dallas and Plano, that have to do with negotiating for more renewable energy on the state grid as well. So there's opportunities to be a partner in ways that aren't just specific to Louisville as well. Increasing our building efficiency within our community itself, looking at incentivizing that through some sort of a competition, recognizing that there's many different factors at play there, looking at how can we be creative through economic development that's been successful in other communities as well. Number four, I've talked to you before about PACE financing. This is an opportunity that we can really tap into that as a resource or provide ourselves as a resource for businesses seeking to increase their efficiency. There's some state grants that will pay, for instance, for charging infrastructure for electric vehicles that are within certain mileage of major interstates. And that's something that's available for private businesses. So is that something that we could help connect that private business with that state program? So it's being that connector and sharing that information so that we're supporting our business community. And then finally, looking at ways that we could potentially have renewable energy generation if it's feasible at city facilities as well. What might this look like for us? It could reduce our emissions as a community, it could have economic savings, obviously, on our city electric bills. We could have an improved sense of community from these energy competitions between neighborhoods, between businesses. And then the city is leading by example, showing this is how we are doing energy efficiency and how it can be implemented in other areas as well. And then there are several different types of benchmarking examples that have done all different scales of projects. Are there any questions or thoughts under the category of energy that you would like to note before we move forward? I know it's a lot to chew on. Okay. We'll move forward then to water. We have a high quality of drinking water here in Louisville, so maintaining that standard and keeping that a high strategy for us to build on our previous successes. Water efficiency, that fine balance between conserving just enough that we're reducing our water consumption. The drainage criteria manual update would fit under Strategy Three, looking at how we can implement some new strategies that involve green infrastructure and sustainable infrastructure design that help us hit some of these other goals as well. And then we have adopted the Denton County Green Belt Plan previously, but looking at how can that be a guide for us and our neighboring communities to continue to implement strategies within that, NOMO zones around riparian zones and creeks and waterways, looking at how that's improving our water quality and our air quality as well. Our expected benefits, obviously more efficient water usage, higher-quality water, healthier green belt areas, more walkable streets, mitigation of urban heat island effects from higher green space. And then there's some examples of other programs that are done in other areas, particularly Denton and Dallas.
Mayor and council, it is almost seven, so I would suggest this is a good stopping place. We can break and go to your regular agenda and then come back and complete this presentation after we do the regular.
Are you ready to go to the regular session?
Yes, sir.
Again, the regular session here with the invocation by Councilmember Gilmore, followed by the pledge to the American and Texas flags by Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson. Please join me in the pledges to our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag of the pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Go down to the bottom, under word, and you'll see it.
Guys, it's just not coming out.
It's still in the presentation. You gotta switch out, you gotta, you have to close for a presentation, or it won't Got a word? There you go. And then, there you go, perfect. First item on the agenda is a visitor-citizen forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. Council, you did, I'll receive an email from Steve Southwell, and I have had an email discussion with Mr. Southwell, and he was fine with me just letting you know that his comments will be put in the minutes, so they'll be on record. His comments are over five minutes, and he was gonna try to get me a condensed version, and he did not do that today.
Okay. That is for the district.
I have no other speaker cards.
Okay. Continue.
Consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card, or e-comment card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Mayor, I've received no cards.
Okay. Do they have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. Do they have a motion in the second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item six: approval of an inter-local agreement with Denton County regarding disbursement from the Coronavirus Relief Fund and direction on the use of the funds and CDBG coronavirus funds provided through the CARES Act. The city will be seeking reimbursement of expenditures incurred in response to the coronavirus public health emergency. The proposed inter-local agreement sets forth the terms and conditions for said reimbursement. Staff is also seeking direction on the use of the funds and of the CDBG coronavirus funds provided through the CARES Act. The recommendation is that the city council approve the agreement and provide direction as set forth in the caption.
Do they have a motion?
So moved.
I believe staff has a presentation on this item.
So, Mayor and council, in front of you, you have a revised budget of expenditures and description of intended uses. And I just want to point out a couple of things. What you've got, you've got that summary, and then attached, we've given you really a description of what these items are, because the sheet's just a little bit confusing. And so remember, what we were given from the county is $55 per capita, which equates to $5,791,445. And so when we started looking at this, we looked at it as what areas we could be reimbursed that were eligible for reimbursement, and that really is that paid-to-date column you see, that first column under expenditures. And then, as I said earlier, they came back and said that the Treasury had come back with a decision that anything related to public safety payroll costs was presumptive. So what that means is it's not going to be audited. So anything related to public safety costs, related to personnel, salary, and benefits is presumptive. So when we talked with the county, it was certainly a lot of questions. Like I said, I was on a Zoom call with the managers in Denton County, and the explanation was you could keep your entire amount if your payroll was over that amount with no questions asked, and you would not be subject to audit. And so if you look at category three, that's payroll, and that category one is what they were describing to us, so we looked at paid-to-date, and that starts on March 1 and goes to current. So public safety costs were $11.9 million. The estimate to get through December is an additional $26.4 million of public safety cost. So you can see that the payroll category alone, it justifies the city keeping the full $5.8 million. But I wanted to point that out, certainly it is still a council decision as to what you want to do. So the county is actually keeping, they're setting aside $24 million for local business grants, they're setting aside $20 million for housing assistance/utility assistance, $10 million for food programs, and $2 million for local nonprofits. And they would actually take applications and would award that money to people who apply. Now, on the housing assistance and utility assistance, they would be giving that money to United Way, and United Way would actually be taking the applications. So when we talked with the county on Friday, the question was, what would happen if the city council were to decide to take some of our $5.8 million and give it to the county for local business grants or housing assistance? And the answer we got was, you could do it, but one of the problems, especially with the local business grants, would be if, let's say, we didn't have enough applicants in the city of Louisville to use the dollars that you appropriate to the county, then that money would really go to any, to other cities within Denton County. And so that's a little problematic, I think. I don't think you have that same problem with United Way and the housing assistance, because they can keep that longer. I think it doesn't have to be expended in the same timeframe, and you would be able to work with United Way to get that spent. But you can take any of the eligible categories and use that $5.7 million. So that's really a question we're asking you tonight to decide, is what you want to do. Now, I would recommend, if you tell us that we should keep the $5.8 million, that we would, we would take that and put it in the CIP in a project account and just maintain that and decide what we're gonna do as Treasury decisions come down. I'm a little hesitant, because we're just hearing last week that this is presumptive and we can keep the money, and that makes me a little uncomfortable, but, you know, certainly in the long run, because of all the revenue shortages, that $5.8 million might be something you would eventually add to a general fund fund balance to help you, to help us balance the budget. So that's certainly one of the uses. I wouldn't recommend that we would start immediately expending that money. It's just questions in my mind. The other thing you could certainly do is you could put it in this account, and let's say, instead of now giving the money to United Way for housing assistance and utility assistance, you wait to see how many applications they get in and United Way gets in, and then you could later add that money. The money has to be expended by December, so that would be another alternative way to look at that. And so if you remember from an earlier meeting, we wanted to balance the money we get from CARE, the CARES grant, with the CDBG money. And Claire has a breakdown, Claire, where are you? Claire has a breakdown of the CDBG dollars, or where the CDBG dollars can be spent. You gave us some direction at the last meeting, but we now wanted you to have that full picture so you can balance how you want to allocate these two COVID-type relief funds. While she's doing that, council, do you have any questions for me?
So, I have a question, Donna. So the $5.7 million, we, some of that, like you said, that could go to the United Way. We either have to send them the money, or can we let them administer it if we hold on to it and keep it in the CIP fund, and then pay them out as they approve?
So what I would recommend you do, so right now, $20 million, Denton County's giving United Way $20 million for housing and utility assistance. That can go to people in Denton or Louisville or anywhere in Denton County. So you could keep all the $5.8 million and say later, as we talk to the United Way, and they say, "Oh yeah, you still have a lot of applicants coming in from Louisville," and you could, we could, we would bring it back to council and say, "Council, we do think United Way still has needs, and you could allocate it at a later time." But you would have to have the money expended by the end of December.
And for the presumptive fees, is that in writing, or is that just advisement that they've given to the county?
They actually have it in writing, and there's a frequently asked questions, and I believe that was in the backup, it's one of the attachments, but that's what we have now. But the county's seeming very confident, they have a law firm that they've hired that's done this analysis, so they feel very confident that we can't keep the money just because it's public safety, regardless of whether those police officers are firefighters. We're actually dealing with COVID. It's presumed that all money spent on public safety is related to COVID and eligible.
Mayor and council, so at the last time that our community grants team presented to you, we discussed the eligible, well, actually, we discussed what were the urgent needs in our community with regard to our CDBG grants. To remind council, we are being allocated $452,305 for CDBG COVID relief funds. These dollars are different than CARES funds, the Corona relief funds that Ms. Barron was just discussing. As you know, with CDBG, there comes a lot of oversight. So whereas the CARES funds, you could just give it to United Way, or you can give it to the county to give to United Way. With CDBG funds, we still have to change our annual plan, so this is just the first step in many to getting that money on the street. So we would change our annual So we would change our annual plan, we would have to identify today if it is Council's direction to designate what are those urgent needs, we want to focus those monies on. And then we have to go through a competitive process with CDBG funds. So every year, usually with our normal CDBG funds, we put out a NOFA, which is a Notice of Funding Opportunity, and every nonprofit in our community says, well, we want some dollars, and this is what we're going to use it on. This will be more targeted, so when Council identifies, these are the urgent needs we have. So let's say Council says, we want to fund domestic violence relief or assistance. We would then call for any nonprofits in our community that can provide those types of services. They then send in an application, and it goes through the CDBG Board, it's vetted like normal, and it goes to Council for final approval. So it's the same process as we normally do for CDBG, it's just going to be a little bit more targeted with regard to those urgent needs. So that's what we're here today, just to discuss what those urgent needs are. If you remember, and you can see it on your screen right now, under CDBG, that heading, these were the identified urgent needs that we heard back from our community, our nonprofits, as well as from our senior outreach centers and call centers. This is the input we were getting from our community. It was utility assistance, mortgage rental assistance, food security, domestic abuse, child abuse services, childcare, and mental health. Those are the ones we identified last time for all of you guys. And at that time, the Council had said, our top priorities are the top four. So utility assistance, mortgage rental assistance, food security, and domestic abuse, child abuse services. But Council, as Ms. Barron said, directed staff to come back so that you could have a more holistic picture with how funding was working in the county. We knew the county was about to receive CARES funding, they were going to start spending their own CARES dollars, as well as the city was going to receive our allotment as well. So wanting to make that decision on CDBG expenditures in congruence with those other expenditures. So as Ms. Barron said, we do know that utility assistance, mortgage rental assistance, and food security is being handled by the county. Whether or not Council feels that's adequate amounts of dollars, I will say that the information we're getting from the counties, they feel this is going to cover the needs for our counties, what we're being told. With regard to domestic abuse and child abuse services, there's not additional funding that's CARES funding that's going towards that. So that may be something Council wants to focus a large or some of the amount of dollars on. And then obviously, the other ones that we identified, which was childcare and mental health. And so basically, if you feel that the county has provided for the first, your first three priorities, and you want to backfill the remainder of those, that is totally within your ability to do so. But we wanted to add one more, and that was internet connectivity. This urgent need came about, came to us really from the Lewisville Independent School District, and it started at the beginning of the whole COVID situation, mainly because students had to start taking classes at home almost immediately, and they had to struggle to find connectivity for families. At that time, they decided to set up, the best scenario they came up with was to create hotspots throughout, or basically Wi-Fi areas, at their schools, at their campuses, but they also partnered with local governments. For example, the city of Lewisville, Wayne Ferguson Plaza, became a place that was put on an LISD map so that kids without internet connectivity, their parents could take them to those locations. Those kids would have to sit in the back of their vehicles while their parents waited and would do their homework in the back of their cars. Many of those locations are not ideal. Some of them are coming out of the front of a school, and they only have access for maybe four vehicles at a time there. So the ISD has indicated that it is generally working, but not, it's not ideal by any means. So they, they have expressed that this was a concern, a continued concern, especially since we're not quite sure what's going to happen in the next school year. So they have a task force that's been put in place to try to come up with, I think, four different options for the new school year. We don't know what those four options are yet, but all of, they run the gambit. But regardless, with social distancing in place, it's going to be important that the ISD maintains some connectivity for their children. The other nonprofit that approached the city was United Way of Denton County, and the reason why was because of employment. So unemployment in Lewisville is higher than it's been. It is actually slightly higher than Texas and slightly higher than US. But what is happening is that if you, if you want to find a job and you need connectivity, you can go to the library. A lot of people would do that. If the library's not open, then that creates a problem. So this helps with individuals, even if they don't have children, being able to find connectivity and find jobs. So we have started this partnership with the Independent School District, which has been really interesting to me. So they did a survey at the end of the school year, or at the beginning of, sorry, at the spring break when Corona hit. So they asked all of their families to send in information about whether or not they have connectivity. You can see, this is a map, I think you guys can all see it up there. So this map basically shows pinpoints of every household that, that has, does not have connectivity. And you can see that Lewisville is, got a lot of heat spots on it that other communities don't have, which I think is, I think we would anticipate that. You can also see that some of the heat map areas, like over the triangle, there's a significant number of homes that don't have connectivity. When you come in and you look at really what these locations are, for example, this one is actually, I thought we had changed this one. Hold on a second. This one's not updated. But this one is actually supposed to be right in front of the budget suites. And so if you can see, there's, it says one of 62. Each one of these, as I, as I progress, will show, this is, it's 62 children living in budget suites that don't have internet. And so you can go through each one of these, this is a household of two, this is a household of one, and you can go, there's a household of three throughout all of these. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty stark picture, I think, of the, of this need, this particular need. So with that being said, we talked with the ISD about options that we could help, and we felt that with a budget of about $150,000, we could pursue one of two options. One would be to provide Wi-Fi at Alvin Turner Park, Reverend Alvin Turner Senior Park, namely because that is right next to Mill Street Elementary, where some of our most needy families are. And the other option, that would actually, that would provide enough for, I believe, 40, I think it was 40 individuals in the parking lot to be able to use that, or in the park to use that. Obviously, there's some negatives with doing that. One, there's a positive, is that we would have Wi-Fi connectivity in a park that would be ongoing, so that's positive. One of the negatives with that is going to be, it takes longer, right? We're going to have to pull fiber there, so it'll probably take about three to four months, rather than the other alternative, which is a quicker turnaround. The other thing is, it still doesn't get rid of the situation of parents having to drive their cars and have their kids sitting in parking lots. We also thought, and I wanted to make sure you knew that we, we thought about this but discounted it altogether, was trying to find Wi-Fi for some of these multifamily homes, or apartment complexes. The problem was, if we did partner with them, we were pretty sure that if you got free Wi-Fi at Basswood Manor, as an example, likely they would eventually up the prices on rent. And so then people were not going to have any benefit with regard to that. There's also difficult, there's also other difficulties with regard to that as well, but we felt like we weren't going to get them the help, financial help as well. So the second option was going to be getting Wi-Fi units for, spending $150,000, and we would basically buy MiFi units the way the library has, and we would be able to check them out to families that are low to moderate income households. We have talked to the Independent School District about that, they're very interested. They actually have a program that's very similar. It's limited in size, so they have 300 units, they are currently renting, not renting out, but loaning out to students, and they are, they're all of high school age. That's being expanded, but it's only 300. And of the total number of families in Lewisville, or households in Lewisville that at least responded to the survey, we have 1,700 and something family, or households that do not have internet. But that being said, I think I've covered all that. I did want to say, on top of the CDBG funding, and it's not on this list right here, there is a portion of that 452,000 that is spent on administrative costs. There is administrative costs, obviously, with administering anything with CDBG. Obviously, we have to pay, you know, we, we can pay for the costs, the time that staff has to spend on administering this program. So I just wanted Council to be aware that admin costs will be a part of that as well. And that can go up to $90,000 if it's spent, if we're actually justifying those expenditures. So with that, I'm going to have our lovely Vanna White, Gina, come up, and she does this, you know, her amazing budget presentation that she always does and puts in the numbers, and I could do that, but she's far better than I am. And I will let Donna take it from here, and you guys can decide where you really want to spend those dollars and what are those urgent needs.
Mayor and Council, I might add that I spoke to Dr. Rogers today, and they actually already have a hotspot program that they administer. And so if you were to decide to allocate the money related to the hotspots, we would be able, I think, to directly give that to LISD, and then they would administer it for us to meet the requirements of CDBG. That'd be one of the issues there. But he was much more interested in that option than to put any more technology in the parks, because people just don't want to go park somewhere and have their kids sit in the car. It just doesn't work. And he said that they have allocated some money to this, but it doesn't meet the needs in Lewisville. And the other interesting thing he told me was, the ISDs are not going to get any of the CARES money. Any CARES money planned for the school systems is being kept by the state of Texas.
I had a quick question.
Yes.
So for the last option you were talking about with the internet, you said we were, we could spend about $150,000. How many units would that get?
I believe that was, hold on, let me find the exact number. It was 325.
325 for 150?
Yes.
We discussed that with Dr. Rogers, he said that would be very helpful. I think Claire, you told us they have 700 units, 700 units now at ISD.
Yes.
But the needs far exceed that.
Any other questions before I bring Ms. Vanna White up here?
So, Council, as you look at the spreadsheet, you can see that the CARES Act, you have the 5.8 million, and then you really have those categories where you could allocate the money. Then you have CDBG, and we've given you the categories to which you could allocate that money. So the question before you is, what do you want to do? As I said earlier, the 5.8 million, you could just keep it. Again, the issue is we're going to have to expend it by the end of December, but I think the, basically applying it against public safety would meet those requirements, right, Dave?
Yes.
So, so it really wouldn't be a problem related to payroll. So in the CARES Act, if you really wanted to give some to the county, I didn't get the idea on the business loans, that the county thought they needed money for business loans. The housing and utility food grants, again, that's going to the United Way. 20 million is a lot of money that they're being given for that, and you could hold our money, and then we could stay in touch with United Way, and Gary would let us know if they needed additional money to go for those programs. So, so there's a lot of options here. Certainly, you're a little bit more limited with CDBG in relation to the various categories, but I would recommend that internet connectivity, we didn't discuss that with you before, but I do think that's a pretty serious need in relation to what the kids are going to have to go through this next school year.
Donna?
Yes, sir.
I'd sent an email, and I know we talked about it just briefly, but one thing that I think there's a gap is messaging as to how to keep yourself safe. You know, the governor has stated that it's very much a personal responsibility moving forward. This virus isn't going away, and I think that it might be important for us to continue to put the word out. And I don't know if there's a budgetary number that fits, I don't know if there's something we can do within our existing team, but I'd like to see if we couldn't allocate some of this to marketing, the, you know, the rules, or the, how to take care of your, how to take care of your community, however you want to frame that.
Yes, sir. After I saw your email, we could go back, we looked at, if you look at that sheet I gave you, again, you have paid-to-date, and you have expenditures. We did bump that communication under proposed to 30,000. That would give us additional funding.
Okay. Thank you.
So if you look through the spreadsheet, that might be helpful for me to do that. Let me just point out a few things. So under Category One, you look at testing, and this is really confusing because you have this issue of how we justify keeping the money, and then you have this issue of how we would actually spend the money, and I know that is confusing. But if you look at the paid-to-date and then the proposed, for those two categories, first Category One, you see we've spent 2,550 today on testing of high-risk populations. We proposed 175,000, and that would include another round of testing at two nursing homes and 15 assisted care facilities, as well as additional special communities in Lewisville that might need testing. If you look at public health, you can see, again, what TJ just mentioned, additional money being allocated, that 30,000, for additional education. 10,000 additional for thermometers and PPE. And that's offset somewhat. We're getting additional money for that through Medicaid, Medicare-type source, like an additional 35,000 on that. And so, and then disinfection. Disinfecting Thrive alone is going to be very expensive. So you see that we spent about 10,577 today. We're estimating another 80,000 being, just being spent on some of the disinfection and Day Porter-type services, and so, and the new Thrive facilities included in that number. So then you have the payroll, which is, again, that issue that justifies the 5.8 million. And then you have the 35,000. If you look under Category Four, telework, so we've spent about 11,000. We had a lot of people having to work from home. You see, a proposed of 35,000. We, if this peaks again, and we have to send people home again, we really didn't have enough computers. We were pulling computers from everywhere. So that would be an additional 35 that we would likely have to spend. If you look under Category Five, this one was difficult to estimate. This is really unemployment claims. We did have a few unemployment claims. We kept most people on the payroll as we went through COVID, when we sent people home, when we were sheltering place. But we did have a few claims. But if we do get to the point where we have a reduction in force, you will have unemployment claims. And so that's what that number is targeted for. And then the big number that you should look at is under Category Six, and you see proposed there, facility retrofit. That's about $270,000, and that's really going through our facilities to make them as safe as we possibly can for our employees and for our residents that visit city facilities. That's going in and making bathrooms as touchless as possible. That's adding plexiglass where we need to, to protect employees, those type of issues. I've given you some additional breakout. You have another attachment, and this has a lot more detail for you to look at as to how that would break down in relation to, especially the retrofits.
Well, so I have an open motion, and the first question that crosses my mind is, I don't know how to restructure that motion. There are so many moving parts here, there's still a lot of uncertainties. I can drill down into any one issue, like the hotspots, and there's 1,700 households with, or students, one of the two with no Wi-Fi. LISD, I think you said, says has 700. We're looking at 325. We're still 700 short, give or take. And staying on that subject for a minute, it doesn't make sense to me to do the parts, and it doesn't make sense for me to equip like a Basswood or something with Wi-Fi, because I agree, they could use that later as an incentive, saying, you know, this is what you get if you move here, so the rent, so and so. But also, it opens the door for the Wi-Fi bandwidth to be consumed by a whole lot of uses that have nothing to do with students. And so- And so, you know, what have I bought? I'm not sure. But it's definitely not just the need. I've bought something for a whole lot of other stray uses. And do we have money that needs to be spent by the end of the year? But we're not sure exactly where that, we want to go with that. That's a lot of possibilities that may need to go someplace, it may not need to go someplace. Denton County is putting 20 million in on, what is it, housing and food. You know, are they going to need more? We don't think so, but we're not sure. You know, again, I come back, and I'm not sure how to str, you know, there's so many small pieces to this, I wouldn't even want to try to structure a motion that nails all this down. It's truly nailing Jell-O to the wall. So, you know, at that point, the question becomes, so how do, how do you restructure the motion? Do you tell the city manager that she's authorized to use best practices and does leave that door open? I mean, you know, you've given a lot of advice, but it's got two and three options, so.
Would you like my recommendation?
Yes.
Would you like me to narrow that down?
Yes.
I would tell council that you should approve the 5.8 million to be maintained by the city with no allocations at this point, that we would maintain that in our CIP account. And if we find that there's shortages, and we'll stay in touch with Denton County, we'll come back to you.
And that makes the most sense to me. And I'm not trying to sound real smart, but what was going through my head is kind of that, you know, best practices, is that, is to put the money, just, it's, I don't think, I don't think you can answer this question tonight. I don't think the information's there. And so the wisest decision is, you know, so to speak, put it in a bank account and see as time goes by, where does it need to be allocated? We're still at that giant juncture of question marks that we had last time we met, and we're not much further along, other than we found some other needs to add on that I have no problem with, by the way, but, you know, the list grew. So, because now we've got hotspots to think about. And so, I mean, I, yeah, that would be, that would be how I'd modify the motion, is, like I say, it's pretty much saying, tell the city manager, use best practices.
And so what I would need, though, council, is the CDBG is just a different issue. So really, we need your direction on CDBG and how you'd like to allocate that. And certainly, we can come back. We don't have to decide that tonight. If you'd like us to bring CDBG back separately, then you can spend a little bit more time thinking about that, which would be fine. We just wanted you to see the whole picture, and I know it's overwhelming. Unfortunately, we live in this world of uncertainty now. Like I say, it was just Friday that we found out that, I mean, we could basically maintain all the money, and we were going down a totally different route. Believe me, we were on the phone rewriting backup memos and everything over the weekend. So I know this is confusing, and it's difficult to explain, but I do need direction related to the CARES funding tonight. We can always bring CDBG back so that you can spend some more time thinking about that.
I think that makes enormous sense. And so I'll modify my motion to place the CARES funds into a capital account and postpone the decision on CDBG funds until further information is available at the next meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Do y'all understand that one?
We do. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor. I'm in support of, I know, I understand the hotspots, and we're going to push this off, are just a kind of a drop in a bucket to help out, but I think we need to start making that progress now, because those kids are going to need, need that. I can't worry about what they're using it for, but we know that there's a need.
Yes.
We have, in the future, we need to find a partner, probably a permanent partnership with Lewisville ISD, to make sure we expand Wi-Fi as best we can. So, I mean, I know that 150 is, is kind of a hop, and I'm kind of giving away what I'm thinking we should do whenever we do take a vote, and we should cover the areas that Denton County is not covering. And we can allocate, I think that'll be 302, 305 left, however we can.
I want to make sure everybody's clear on something I said. I'm not concerned about how kids are using it. I'm concerned about wide-open Wi-Fi at a facility, and a lot of people aren't kids.
So one thing that Dr. Rogers mentioned today was, when they look at how they would allocate those hotspots, allow people to check those hotspots out, that they would prioritize a family that maybe had three kids or four kids, rather than over a family that just had the one child, so.
Makes sense.
The way they, because they wanted to get out this connectivity, increase connectivity to the greatest number possible, increase that, so.
I want it targeted for kids, though.
Right.
That's, I want to make sure that was not misunderstood.
Okay. So we'll bring this back to the next meeting.
Anybody else? All of us in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Is that all y'all need there?
Yes, sir. Gina's a little disappointed she didn't get to move the numbers around. She'll be prepared to help you next meeting.
Budget's coming.
Oh, it's coming, all right.
Do we need to, anything on this? We did that, I want to, okay. Okay, item seven.
Consideration of a variance to Section 6-103 regarding driveways on Lot 6, Block A of Fairway Business Park. The subject site is within the Fairway Business Park addition located on Jones Street and west of Mill Street. The owner is requesting a variance to reduce the required driveway spacing of 50 feet along Jones Street. The recommendation is that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the caption. David Salmon, city engineer, and Steve Homeyer are both present to address any questions.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Staff have anything on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Do I have a motion, the second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item eight.
Consideration of an ordinance amending Section 15-88 to prohibit left turns for westbound Purnell Street and the easternmost driveway entrance to Mill Street Elementary School. This traffic circulation pattern employed by the school during student pickup and drop-off times make left turns from westbound Purnell Street problematic at the Purnell Street and East driveway intersection. The Transportation Board recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. City engineer David Salmon is available to address any questions.
Okay.
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
Do I have a motion, the second? Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mayor.
Somebody got it?
Christian.
Oh.
Oh, no. This needs to read.
I need to read the caption.
I thought that's where it was coming from.
Sorry. This is, this is an ordinance of Lewisville.
I missed, I missed two things if that was the other one. Okay. No discussion? Okay.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the Lewisville City Code Chapter 15, Section 15-88 by prohibiting left turns from westbound Purnell Street into the Mill Street Elementary School East driveway, providing for repealer severability penalty and effective date, declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine, do I have a red?
Yes, sir. Consideration of an ordinance amending Section 15-35 to establish the speed limit of 70 miles per hour on State Highway 121 Main Lanes from the southern city limits at the Lewisville-Cappell boundary line to mile point 20, point 000, being the location of the Sam Rayburn-Towaway and State Highway 121 business split. A Texas dot speed study recommends the speed limit of 70 miles per hour on the subject section of State Highway 121 in Lewisville. The Transportation Board recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. City engineer David Salmon is available to address any questions.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion, the second. Counselor.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the Lewisville City Code Chapter 15, Section 15-35 by amending the speed limit on the State Highway 121 Main Lanes, providing for repealer severability and a penalty, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Just one, quick, from my understanding, this is just the main highway, not the service road off a valley, because that's where the turn is, where we don't have a light at the moment, and it's already difficult to make that turn in the morning with no light. So we're not, we're not increasing the, the service lane, right?
That's correct. It's only about 800 feet in Lewisville. It's just a very small segment of 121.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item ten.
Consideration of one alternative standard to the IH35E corridor overlay district regulations associated with facade changes for a restaurant located at 1342 South State Highway 121 Business. The property owner completed a patio addition to the south face of the existing building and made changes to the west, south, and north facades without prior city approval. An alternative standard is requested to reduce the brick or stone facade requirement from 80% to 33.33% on the front west elevation. The Overlay Board recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the alternative standards as set forth in the caption. Planning manager Michelle Berry is available to address any questions.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve alternative standards as presented. Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11.
Consideration of resolution extending the declaration of local disaster for public health emergency until 11:59 PM on July 6, 2020. Ongoing evaluation of circumstances related to the virus and the updated recommendations of the CDC and the Texas Department of State Health Services indicate that the conditions necessitating the disaster declaration have and will continue to exist for a period extending beyond June 15, 2020. The recommendation is that the city council consider the resolution as set forth in the caption.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do I have a motion, the second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now we're down to reports. Councilmember Jones, start with you.
Uh, no report. No report.
Do we want to start with the, did we want to start with the COVID reports first?
I got ahead of my seat. Let's get ours done, yeah? Go ahead and do yours.
Okay. I was just going to mention one thing, that the, the Sissons University, although the dates are not set, from my understanding, they're also, the application system is open, so I think we have a limited number of people that we can accommodate. We do anticipate that starting in September, so I would encourage, if you are interested in that, to go ahead and go ahead and apply, apply online.
Just, the reason the dates aren't set yet is because we're going to have to do a different coordination than what we've done before, so we'll be working on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the applications are open.
They are open.
Okay. That it?
That's all, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Gilmore?
I'll pass tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Paul?
Nothing, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Actually, starting to have some MCL Grand activities. So first of all, Texas Toons, we're going to try to get that started back up with performance by Sonny Sweeney. That's been rescheduled for July 18. Acoustic jam sessions, looks like they'll be starting back up on Fridays. And they have a songwriter challenge out there right now for, unless they did that performance, for reunion is the topic. And I don't think they've had that yet, so, but I don't have a date on it. Keeping Lewisville Beautiful had a garden secrets class scheduled for July, for, sorry, June 25, but that's been canceled. And then finally, Color Dance is an art exhibit being presented by the Visual Arts League of Lewisville, and that runs from June 20 through July 11. And just a last note, the MCL Grand will be closed on Friday, June 3, and Saturday, June 4. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. City manager, do you have anything?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay.
Do you later, but.
Now we're down to the staff reports. Do you have anybody for staff tonight?
Does anyone have a staff report?
Anybody? I can't see anybody raising their hand or anything.
I don't think you do, Mayor.
Nothing from Mr. Ferris?
No, sir.
Okay. Now we're down to the COVID-19 response.
Uh, yes, sir. Mayor and council, we continue to reopen city operations. We do have a number of facilities that are open to the public now. You don't have, have to have an appointment, City Hall, Municipal Annex, the Bacchus Public Service Center, the VIC, and our Senior Activity Center inside Music City Mall. Those are all open to the public without an appointment. You will notice, Julie and I had some conversations about moving a desk out into the lobby to help people when they come in, they have questions, certainly with the mask issue. And you'll remember, I discussed with you earlier where we're going to require the taking of temperature and the wearing of masks, and where we cannot. So at a facility like the Annex, where people have the right to come in and pay their municipal court bill so that we don't arrest them, we're not going to take temperature, and we're not going to require a mask, because you might have people that don't want to do that. The same with City Hall, because you should be able, you have to be able to come in and pay for your water. So at those facilities, we will not be taking temperature, except for staff. We're still continuing that process with staff, and we're not going to require masks. We do certainly encourage the wearing of masks. We had Pat, Patsy sitting out front, and she had a little, close to about 60 people that came through, came into City Hall today from the public. About half wore masks, nearly, you know, half of that number did not, and a few people came in and asked for a mask, which is one of the reasons for that person to be out in the lobby area now. So you'll see that change. The library is continuing, they began their come and go on June 15. And what that means, with an appointment, you can have access to computers, to the Internet, Wi-Fi, and study spaces, but that is by appointment only. We will, at the library, require that you wear a mask, and we're going to check your temperature. Again, it's a different type of service, and that's the reason for the distinction. We will eventually get to come and stay, and when we're going to get to that point in the library, I can't really tell you now. I'm a little concerned, we're seeing the number of positive cases that are peaking again. We're monitoring that very carefully. I had, I looked at a survey today from Carolyn about what was going on in our survey cities. Dallas has, they're not as far along as we are. So you have some, you have a couple that are just reopened, you have some that are where we are, you have some that are, you know, not as far along as we are. So it varies by city. I think we're both stepping, we're all stepping back on the library and being very, very cautious. So that's where we are with the library. As Councilman Ferguson mentioned, the MCL Grand is beginning to open operations on the 16th. They'll be open to the public for box office sales. The Art Gallery will open Tuesday through Saturday, 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. And there, again, we're going to require the taking of temperatures and the wearing of masks. Again, it's not essential that someone be able to attend a performance at the MCL Grand, so that is the reason for that distinction. After June 30, we'll be getting, we'll be getting back to normal, resuming more of our normal operations, hopefully with larger events, again with restrictions. We're going to maintain that physical distancing. And so you can see in the, here today in the theater, you see those markings where people can, rows people can sit on, rows people can't sit on. That's the same thing that Denise will enforce when we open. So that, that drives a lot of questions. You're going to have to, you can only, you can have fewer people in here. You're gonna have to, you can only, you can have fewer people in here for a performance, so how does that drive how we pay a performer? So, there's just a lot of issues. As I said earlier, we now live in kind of a world of uncertainty, so I don't have all the answers for you. We tried to normally have that, but there's some things that we're just having to work through and think through as we move forward. The animal shelter, again, I've been amazed, we've, we've been able to adopt animals, some of that's because you waive the fee. Beginning June 18, we're gonna go back and do in-house animal sterilizations, and beginning June 29, this shelter will be open to the public, and we'll start charging fees again. Parks and Recreation, a very challenging area to reopen. We're going to open Sun Valley on June 17. Hopefully, we'll have enough lifeguards, that's been a challenge, to be able to staff it. But you're gonna have the, the opening, you're gonna have two slots per day, they'll be closed on Monday and Tuesday, again, for disinfection purposes. But they'll have two slots from 12 to 2:30, and from 3:30 to 6, with 184 opportunities to, to be in the pool. So, the people are gonna have to go online, and they're gonna have to register to use the pool. So, that's all new and all very, very different, and we're just gonna have to work through it, but.
So, there will not be any walk-up? Is that correct?
There should not be any walk-up, Mayor.
Okay.
People need to register online.
Mayor, I'm sorry, city manager, I have a question for you. If the 184 slots are not filled and there is a walk-up, what happens?
We're gonna let them in.
You're what?
We're gonna let them in, but we don't really want to advertise that, because we really want people to, to register online.
Got it.
We're gonna hold back some slots for that, but, but we're gonna hopefully not have very much of that.
And inform them that next time they need to.
Yes, they need, yes, exactly. And that is the report on your reopening of city operations. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
I don't, excuse me. I don't have a question, I just, I'm very pleased that we are watching the numbers and making decisions based on those numbers, because I'm watching the numbers too, and I'm scared. It's scaring me, so.
It's very worrisome.
Yep.
Okay. That it? Okay. Uh, got one more thing here. First of all, I want to thank the staff for all they've done over the last, since the middle of March, and it is something new every day, and that's from administration on down. So, it, I, I was saying this too shall pass, but I don't know when it's gonna pass right now. And the other thing I've got here is, the city has created the mayor's commission, and I'm calling it Race Relations, that's just a big title for it, that's all it is, and it's, it's actually called Listen, Learn, and Lead. And that is in the process of being formed up right now. Do you have anything you want to say on that right now?
Sure, Mayor. So, certainly, over the last couple of weeks, the mayor has been inundated with emails and phone calls, and so he and I talked about how best to respond. And one issue certainly is to, to respond quickly, to look at conversations that are going on in, on social media, to look at the letters we're receiving, and to try to get a working group that we can sit in a room and just have really open conversation. And sometimes it's very difficult when it's an entire council that starts driving posted meetings and those type of issues. So, we thought it best, at this point, that it be more of a mayor's commission, a little bit more informal, so that there is, we can move a little faster, and there's some not as much formality in that process. The, the issue really is that we need to start out to really listen to what is going on in the community, and to hear from people that have lived here a number of years, or who are new to the community, to have a, you know, their perspectives on, on issues they've experienced that we need to be aware of, and that we, we may need to look at change. And then, once we listen to, to their viewpoints and the, the issues that they faced, for us to share, to say, you know, these are the general orders of the police department, and in those general orders, this is what we have, and can that be changed? Can that be improved? What do we need to do? But again, it's an informal way to try to step back, learn from each other, and get better, and come together as a community. And that is the goal of this process and this program. One thing the mayor did tell me was he wanted to make sure that he was there and that one council member be with him at each one of these sessions. So, when we move forward with this, we would get you to sign up for which meeting you would like to be at. So, Mayor, I don't know if I missed anything?
No, I just, we, again, we wanted to have it as, as a committee-driven, and not staff-driven, and not council-driven, but I do want to rotate the council in there, if, if not to tell them what to do, but so y'all can hear what the comments are that are being made. Have we come up with a number of meetings we're talking about having?
I believe it's about seven at the most, but we'll learn as we go forward to see what topics come up, so you may have more. But we thought the first two meetings would really be just listening, inviting people in from the community and listening.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Because I, I was actually looking through this earlier, and I think all the topics, at least, that are in here so far, from an educational standpoint for myself, I would, I would love to listen in on those. I don't know if maybe we could set up a Zoom meeting where, even if it's just listen-only mode, I, I would love to attend a meeting in person, but I would also love to listen in, just, you know, on, online.
What I wanted to do is have, have a list of the council members and put them in order, and if, if they can't make it that particular day that, that their name is up, then somewhere or another, we'll rotate them at another time, and just move all, all the other ones forward, and, because there's gonna be a day that y'all have a business conflict, or going out of town, or whatever the case might be, or, or sick, which I hope I don't have any more of those days, so.
I think, Councilwoman, and I'm gonna look to our city attorney on this one, but I think that if you were attending via Zoom, that would be problematic.
Well, it'd be a meeting.
It'd be a meeting. Yeah, it'd have to be posted. It would drive the posting of the meeting.
Okay, so even if we were in listen-only mode and we couldn't speak?
I, I think that would be correct.
You should be present.
So, would the, would a, would a workaround be that we record the meetings so everyone can see them?
Yes, sir.
That would be, I mean, yeah.
Absolutely.
So, I could watch it, because I would love to hear, you know, in the first two meetings, we're talking about just getting feedback. I would love to hear that directly, whether I'm able to attend in person or not.
So, I, I think it would be very important that we video these so that we can actually put them on our website also, so the public can also see.
Okay.
And I just hope it accomplishes something, whatever that might be, so.
Yes, counsel, just so you know, I mean, we have received a, a number, certainly the mayor has, of emails and phone calls, and we need, certainly want to be responsive, and we want to listen to what's of concern in our community and, and make changes. So, that's really the whole goal here.
Yes. And they're still coming in. We're starting to get more, not more, but we're also starting to get the counter of the do-all-these-eight-things, and y'all seen some of those, I'm pretty sure. But there's some of those coming in on the other side. Don't, don't do anything that these people are asking for, so. And those are put in the same list, so.
Yes.
Anybody have anything else to say about that?
You're not the only one getting calls, and, trust me. I think this is a, a good first step. I'm kinda waiting till after this meeting, I'll talk with you and chief, chief later, deeper later about some things, ideas on my mind. And if you don't have a full roster, I do have some people that you may want to contact to add to the list.
Okay.
If it's not a full committee already.
Very good.
Okay. If there's, anybody have anything else? Or just move on? Okay. Now, we're down into the closed session.
Are we going back to the?
We're gonna go to Chris Idaho.
No, I mean, the.
The workshop. Do we want to finish that first?
I'd like to go to the closed session first.
Okay.
Closed session. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney pending litigation, Sage Natural Resources LLC versus City of Louisville, Texas, Louisville Summit LLC, and Huffine Communities, Inc., case number 20-2903-211, Denton County District Court. Two, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, legal issues related to door-to-door solicitation. Three, Section 551.072, real estate, property acquisition. Four, Section 551.087, economic development, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations.
Is there any action to be taken?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All of us in favor should adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We're adjourned.